Good evening. At seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. I'm Grace Lusbrunz, Cascade Township Supervisor. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Shipley?
Present.
Trustee Kessel is, I believe, excused. And Supervisor Lusbrunz?
Here.
Clerk Slater?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations. Do we have State Representative Skaggs? Virtually? Manager Swayze, did you hear anything?
I did not.
Did we put it on the wrong agenda?
No, they said he was coming on March twenty second.
Okay. Um.
I can touch base with his office again tomorrow and reschedule.
Okay, one second.
Might be lost.
Yep.
Big city.
I'm not in a position to um be a timeliness particular. One moment. How about this? Can we move on? Could we hold on Article four and move on to Article five? All the comments?
How about? Madam Supervisor, I make a motion that we move Article four to Article eleven point five in the event that Representative Skag comes at the end of the meeting. So we could have his presentation done after Article eleven. Before public comments.
Yeah, when does closed session come up?
Before that.
Before that.
So when would he speak before that?
After that. Or we could put it before if you think it's being more appropriate.
Let's do it before so that people aren't here to
Gotcha.
Less of a wait.
Can I move that we that we move Article four to become Article nine point five?
Support.
Oh, all right. He is still in session in Lansing.
Oh.
Um. And so he will try again at a later date.
I withdraw my support.
Sorry for anyone who was uh Yep. So we have no presentations this evening, but hopefully we'll have Representative Skaggs in the near future. Brings us to Article five, public comments. Now's the time to comment on anything on tonight's agenda. Because we have a closed session, so there'll be a delay before the second public comment session. Feel free to comment on anything on the agenda or just not. If you want to speak, so you don't have to wait. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for record keeping. Welcome.
Good evening. Brian Holcomb, thirty-four fifteen Glenstone Court Southeast. Two items. First item, how are we doing on replacing our trustee that or the treasurer that retired or took a leave of absence?
Retired.
Because I didn't see it on the agenda. Did I miss it?
Discussion.
I just wanted to know how we're doing.
Yep, so Article eleven.
Article eleven. Manager comments. No discussion. Treasurer appointee process. So where are we at in that?
Public deliberate. So the board decides majority vote and it will be the board is not, we're not allowed to deliberate privately. So we've gotten how many applications? Seven?
For seven, yep.
Very good, very qualified candidates. We're lucky to have such a great group. We received those a couple of weeks ago, and I believe the board has until March, is it fourteenth?
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth, thank you. To make a decision, otherwise it gets bumped to an election that the county handles. I think we all agree we don't want that. Wouldn't be good.
Right. Okay. Second item is any update on Red Creek Properties.
Red Peter Properties. Yep, nothing from the Eagle standpoint. I believe I sent you the email that we got from Eagle as well. So it sounds like they have some restoration items that they have to do for Eagle. From our standpoint, we did get a complaint again from you guys and issued a lightning citation last week or maybe earlier this week. So that is in the, that's in process right now.
Okay, in the cleanup that supposedly they're doing that goes through Eagle?
Yes.
But they have to get permits from Kent County?
I don't know.
Okay, because they're still have no silt fence. They are still moving stuff around and we find out that they haven't gotten any permits yet.
All right. Yep, I can check into the permit office and see what they require.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we hear back or do we have anything about the other issue, the um scope of the PUD language?
So our attorney is committed to writing a written opinion for the board to consider, but I had not seen anything.
Okay, that will know is a little more complicated, but we're going to get a legal opinion on that, too. Any other public comments, questions? Mr. Hughes, we're in the middle of public comments and we have a closed session tonight. So to keep people from waiting, if you don't want to sit through that, you're welcome to make any comments on the agenda or off right now. Anyone virtually?
No one virtually that would wish to speak.
Thank you. Article six, is there a motion or discussion regarding the consent agenda?
I have some questions on some of these bills. I pulled some invoices or asked Ben to pull some invoices for me. And I'm just questioning why we're getting Fishback invoices still after they're no longer our township engineer. That one is from December one.
So and it was for November work. So the, so there was two invoices. One was for site plan reviews. So they finished up the site plan reviews that they were working on in October, November before Spalding Decker took over that process. And the other one was just the finalizing. So it's the second year of the Schoolhouse Creek monitoring requirement for the project we did there. So Fishbeck did the monitoring report in August and submitted it in November. So that was a follow-up to that. And then the two sprinkling invoices were, they were from JI, so they just got paid late.
Yeah, they did. On this, okay, but I'm done with Fishback invoices. We're all done with that.
So we'll probably, we'll have to decide what we want to do with the Schoolhouse Creek monitoring. I don't know if Spalding Decker is set up to do that because Fishbeck did that project. So that'll come back in front of the board as an individual item for you guys to consider. But yes, otherwise we're done with Fishback.
Keep us informed before we get invoices.
I got a quick, quick question.
I have one more here about the sprinkler systems. This is repair damages from new landscape and directional boring damage. Who did the damage?
I'll have to follow up with Jim. I don't know.
Because we've got a bill here for sixty-two hundred dollars for that damage and if somebody damaged it, another company.
Yep.
This is their bill, not ours.
Yep, I can follow up on that and report back at the next board.
Okay, and then I have another question. On sprinkler systems and throughout the township, winterizing things. Why isn't our building and grounds department doing those minor repairs like screwing in a sprinkler head?
We've just, we've always used the company to do it. I mean, we don't have the equipment to do the blowouts and that kind of stuff.
I understand the blowouts. But like adjusting heads and replacing heads and pretty simple stuff.
You could look into training our staff on that. I can talk to Jim about that.
I think we could do that because personally I did this fifty years ago for ten restaurants in the six-one-six area code. I was eighteen. It's not complicated, so. Uh, that's where I'm at. I'd just like to make sure that we don't have overbilling here and I want to know who did the damage to our systems.
Right.
Thank you.
Trustee Shipley?
Couple of comments. Um on the um engineering surveys on the creek, is that something that our in-house engineer could do? Is he, is he equipped to do that?
So he, that's not his area of expertise?
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah.
And lastly, I would be willing to wager that the damage from directional boring was done by the fiber optic cable people that we approved to go on down through there because they were working all year long along there.
Sixty-two hundred dollars?
Uh huh. I'm sure that would be, that would be worth going after.
I'm sure they have a checkbook.
And they had permits from the Kent County Road Commission to do that, so they're reliable for all restoration and damages.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Can we look into that, Manager Swayze, if it was?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. So with that, I make a motion to approve consent agenda?
Support.
That's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, discussion or motion?
Well, since trustee Nordhook has brought some good, good points, obviously he's gone through the financials. I moved to approve the financial actions.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve Article seven, financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article eight, unfinished business. Item zero-two-three, twenty-twenty-three, request to assign lease of six-eight-nine-six Cascade Road. This is the toughy building at the corner of Thornapple River Drive and Cascade Road.
I make a motion to remove this from the table.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald to untable this item and place it back on the agenda, supported by trustee Nordhook. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Manager Swayze?
Yeah, so you'll recall that we tabled this item and directed our township attorney to contact the attorney for Mavis and possibly negotiate some terms in regards to an assignment of the lease. We in turn got notice from the attorney from Mavis that they had withdrawn their purchase offer. So the appropriate action tonight would be to remove this item from the agenda.
Questions? So then stays as is for the time being, right?
Stays as is for the time being.
I will be, remove this from the agenda.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Nordhook, to remove this item to the, from the agenda, given that the potential purchasers have withdrawn their potential agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article nine, new business. Item zero-two-seven, twenty-twenty-three, amendments to the Cascade Township Water Utility Service District map. Manager Swayze, could you walk us through this one, please?
Yep, certainly. So we all know that parts of our township are served by the Grand Rapids Water and Sewer System. And as a retail community, any residences, businesses, or other buildings connected to the water sewer system are direct customers of the City of Grand Rapids and pay their bills directly to the utility system. In turn, the system's owned and operated by the City of Grand Rapids. So our participation in the Grand Rapids Water Sewer System is governed by a master agreement. This was originally executed in the year two thousand for thirty years and is subsequently extended for an additional five years, each five years, and that's happened four times so far. So among many provisions in the agreement, the agreement details the process for establishing what's called the Utility Service District for each customer community. And this is the area which serves where public water and our sanitary sewer service can be extended pursuant to the terms of the agreement. So I included a couple items in your packet. So there's the Water and Sewer Utility Service District maps as they currently stand out, as well as the relevant page out of the agreement for establishment of the Utility Service District. So both the Planning Commission and the Board have had recent discussions about changes to the future land use map of the Township Comprehensive Master Plan. So in concert with those efforts, the Board may also want to consider a reduction in the size of the water and sewer utility districts as well. While the agreement doesn't necessarily lay out a specific process for the reduction of the district as it does with expansion, the township has reduced of our size of our district in the past utilizing a similar process. So if the Township Board wants to move forward with this process, staff needs an understanding of which properties we would like to have removed from the map. In two thousand twenty-two, the maps were actually established on the parcel-by-parcel basis. So we can remove properties on a parcel-by-parcel basis as well. However, it should be noted that in general, if a property currently fronts a water sewer main, it's not eligible to be removed from the map. So once the requested changes are identified, we'd ask the Water Sewer Utility System to provide us with an updated map, and that would come back to the Township Board for approval prior to being submitted formally to the Utility Advisory Board. Should be noted that it's easier to remove property from the district to add it back in, to add property back in, even property that's been previously removed. The USD would need to be sixty-five percent served by the utility, or an equal amount of property would have to be removed when adding property in. I do think that we're above that sixty-five percent threshold right now. So I don't know if that would be a particular issue. Just note that there is an additional requirement for adding property in. So no direct cost to the township to adjust the Utility Service District. In fact, there might be a small benefit to the existing customers of the system as the size of the USD is a small factor in establishing our rates. And a reduction in the size of the district would theoretically provide rate relief for customers. However, the reduction may be too small to be completely noticeable. So with that, staff's looking for direction on the potential amendment to the Cascade Township Water and Sewer Utility Service District maps.
You see, Nordhook?
The Planning Commission is working on a whole bunch of rezoning for future. I think we should wait until we see what they come up with before we decide what to put in and what to take out. I know they're working hard on taking a lot of acres and rearranging that, that master plan, that future use. So I don't think we have the knowledge to make this decision tonight.
So that, I mean, yeah, that would be fine. You know, if you, if that's the way we want to go, you know, if we, if you provided the direction that, hey, we want our Utility Service District maps to match the proposed zoning amendments coming from the Planning Commission, we can actually work on the map in concert. So when those proposed amendments come to the Township Board, we could come with proposed map change as well.
I think to prevent confusion and future conflict of one program versus other, that would be a wise move of what Timmy and Ben had recommended. To postpone this until the Planning Commission finishes their work.
They're getting close.
They've been working hard.
But they're not ready.
So, so Ben, I mean. Okay, great.
Yep.
Um. Are you suggesting then that we table this or that we maybe make a motion to put you in charge of coordinating with the Planning Commission, that we work on the maps preliminarily, do preliminary work to be in alignment with what the Planning Commission is going to be recommending to us?
Yeah, because you guys will get a second stab at it regardless. So we would bring back then the actual maps for you guys to approve. So if you want to give me that direction, I can make sure I'm working with Brian. So whatever changes that are being recommended by the Planning Commission can be reflected in the USD maps as well.
And we're going to get better maps.
What's that?
We're going to get better maps.
Yeah.
These are kind of hard to read. So these are actually very, very detailed maps. The problems that are printed out, right? So if they're on the computer, you can blow it up and you really dig into it. It really gets foggy.
Yeah.
Uh, that works. And I just want to note that um the, this will come back in front of the board, but the way the town, the few tools that the township has at its disposal to kind of help with how development happens in the township is zoning and it's sewer and water. So right now there's a hot issue about industrial, there's industrial development, some who desire that on the backside of the airport. And along with that comes potentially, in sewer water, it goes hand in hand with that. So if we want to be proactive, it's important that we look at that in tandem. And the more people are aware, the better. So I look forward to this coming back in front of the board. And we need a master plan that's consistent with our, what we learned from the strategic plan, which was based on what residents want. And right now our master plan, I don't think is consistent with what residents have expressed a desire for. The good stuff. We'll look forward to seeing it again. Thank you. Item zero-two-eight, twenty-twenty-three, consider a refresh project to the Cascade Library. Manager Swayze?
Thank you. So I'm just going to introduce it real quick and then turn it over to the stars of the show so they can talk a little bit more about the project. But for the past couple of years, us and KDL have been working on the preliminary design and cost estimate for an interior refresh project, the Cascade Library. There's a pretty detailed memo from Lulu in the package, details regarding the need for the project. But it can be boiled down to a building in need of an upgrade after twenty-five years of use and the continued evolution of how our residents interact with the library. So last year, the township and library staff came to a township board meeting to present a conceptual design and budget for the proposed Cascade Library Refresh Project. And at the time, we got direction from the Township Board to solicit feedback from the public related to the use of space. So we got our communications team together in partnership with KDL and developed educational materials and the survey regarding both this project and the outdoor space project that we've been talking about for the past six months or so. That was also recently approved by the board. So all of the project materials, including the survey, were put out on the township webpage dedicated to the project. And to note the survey, the township utilized channels such as article and link in our township summer print newsletter last summer. Township website, the Township and KDL Facebook pages, Township e-newsletter, and signage at Township Hall Library and their Fourth of July book sale. So I provided all the results in year packet, as well as all of the comments that we received. I would say most prominent of the responses is that over ninety percent of the respondents indicated they thought the interior renovations would enhance the library's value to the community, and almost ninety percent thought it would be a good use of Township Library funds. Uh, I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to the KDL team, and then when they're done, I can just talk a little bit about the process and next steps.
Welcome.
Hello again, board. My name is Lulu Brown. I'm the manager of the Cascade Library. Thank you for making time for us to discuss this on the agenda. I just wanted to talk a little bit about what the intention is behind the design. Of course, we got a beautiful design from Progressive Annie, but what we're really trying to address with this refresh are just the ongoing maintenance issues that we haven't dealt with in a while. So that's the inadequate lighting, the damage to the external doors, the worn carpeting, the paint. There is roof damage every spring season. There are constant leaks that happen in this building where we're putting out buckets, not only in the basement, but in the book drops. If you go into any of the private rooms, sometimes it's a little embarrassing when we see that the wallpaper is peeling in certain areas. And of course, some of the outdated and worn furnishings. We have replaced some of that through whether it was township funds or the Friends Funds in the past, but it is a public space and there are peace stained chairs. So we are looking forward to having furniture that is built for a public space. Aside from that, Ben highlighted a little bit about the survey results. Everything wasn't positive. There are some people who aren't using the library, and I think those were some of the comments that we got that were slightly negative of why do we need this? I hope that it's because when they saw the design, they thought there were going to be a lot more shelves or a ton new furniture. But really, we want to just focus on the maintenance of the building with this project.
Discussion? Comments?
Do we have a cost estimate on what we want to do, Ben?
Yeah, so I can talk a little bit about that. So the budget that we had done with the initial conceptual design had a approximate price range of one point five to one point nine million dollars, and that was actually divided up into four components as well. So the library fund currently has a fund balance of two point two to two point three million dollars pending completion of our audit this year. So if the Township Board decided they want to take the next steps, you know, the next part of the process would be to get to an architectural design firm onboard to complete a final design and put together bid documents. We began that process by engaging Spalding Decker to see if it's a service that they may be able to provide. However, they indicated that architecture is not one of their services. So with that, we're recommending that we put out an RFP. We've got a comprehensive list from Missy of all of the local firms that have been working on various library projects throughout the county. So I think we will get a good mix of people to respond. The current budget estimates architectural design fees in the range of seven percent of project costs, which would range from a hundred and four to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So if the board wants to take a next step, I would ask them to direct staff to issue the RFP for architectural services, and we'll be back in front of you at a meeting in May with some bids to look at.
When was that one point five estimate? Put together?
So that was, so the original estimate was put together in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and then they updated it when they came back in front of the board last, late last spring, early last summer. I think those numbers are still, still good. They put together an inflationary increase for kind of each year, and we took the two thousand twenty-three inflationary increase.
And all of this is available, this is coming from the library fund?
Correct.
Given that this is coming from the library fund, more importantly, our library is world-class. So thank you, Lulu, you and the KDL do a fantastic job. And every time I go in, I'm impressed with the service and how well it's used by the community. So with that, I move for staff to issue an RFP for architectural services for the Cascade Library refresh project. I think it's great for the community, and I think it's, it's highly supported.
Support.
And just a comment, too. I, I think that we can do this one step at a time. We don't have to grab the elephant and try and eat it all at once. Just like the outdoor project that we embrace with the library. So we still have control over how much money is going to be spent. And personally, I always have a problem when we have slush money built into the budget. But I've been corrected before about how that works. So I got to support it, too.
So that's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by clerk Slater, to approve or to direct staff to issue RFPs for the library project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for your hard work on this. We really appreciate it. Item zero-two-nine, twenty-twenty-three, participation in the second round of the National Opioid Settlement. Manager Swayze?
Thank you. So we've received notification that we're eligible to participate in this round of the National Opioid Settlement as well. Previously, we participated in the settlement against Cardinal McKesson and AmerisourceBergen, as well as Johnson and Johnson. So this settlement will resolve all opioid litigation brought by the state and local political subdivisions against TIVA, Allergan, CVS, and Walmart. And the settlement funds must be used to remediate and abate the impacts of the opioid crisis. So the state of Michigan elected to participate in the settlement, and as a political subdivision of the state with a population over ten thousand, we're eligible to participate as well. Initial estimates show that if the township does choose to participate, it'll receive approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars. Though I will note that that is over a period of a couple of years. The regulations for spending the funds are outlined in the agreement and generally relate to the remediation of the effects of the opioid crisis. In order to participate in the settlement, we have to agree to execute the four settlement participation forms. And in general, these agreements release all the claims against the entities, including in the settlements. So I will say the settle in the report says the settlement partition forms and both settlement agreements are in the process of being reviewed by Township Legal Counsel. That review is completed. They've indicated they have no issues and that all of their other municipalities they represent are opting in as well. We do have to sign the agreements prior to April eighteenth if we want to participate, and the award allocations are subject to change based on several contributing factors, including the number of entities opting into the settlement agreement. So again, if we choose to participate, we'll receive approximately twenty-nine thousand dollars. We're starting to have conversations about how to utilize these funds. We actually just got our first couple of checks earlier this year. So we're starting, we're putting them in the in a controlled fund, and then eventually we'll come to the Township Board with an opportunity about what we might be able to use those. In a controlled fund and then eventually we'll come to the township board with an opportunity about what we might be able to use those for.
What was the? What had happened? What was the amount for the first round? I don't remember.
So the first round was thirty five thousand dollars, but it was actually over five years. So I want to say we've received about eight thousand dollars so far.
Okay.
And and Ben, our options, if we said we don't want to participate, means we wouldn't get the money as well as then we'd have to litigate on our own, which is probably a possibility. That that's really the alternative, right?
Yeah, so we. Yeah, I mean, we obviously wouldn't litigate on our own because, you know, we really don't have. Yeah. So really, what would happen then is that if we chose not to participate, the funds would go back into the pool and then be allocated out to everybody else that does participate.
And and do we have? We we've identified where where and how we can use those funds.
So we're starting to have those conversations. You know, it's probably going to be some type of partnership, right? None of the local municipalities, with the exception of maybe City of Grand Rapids and Wyoming, got enough money to do anything on their own. So being able to do something in partnership with either the other participating municipalities or with the sheriff's department or, you know, the fire department's getting together. So I think it'll take a little time for us to figure out exactly what to use them for, but if we want to get them, we have to let them know by April eighteenth.
How were the funds? How was it decided that how they would be allocated percentage wise? Did we all get the same amount?
Nope, there's a, it's really percentage based. If you get into some of the pages in there, you can see all the percentages. Yeah, big, long, long, but small numbers, zero, zero, two, six, five, you know. I think it's it's basically all population based.
Okay. Great. Discussion further or emotion?
I don't.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, we have nothing to lose and I think that. The prospect of making this a larger community remediation of this nationwide problem. Is pretty good and obviously the way that we do that is forthcoming. We don't have to decide that tonight.
Seems like a no brainer.
Yep. I I move we participate in the National Opioid Settlement and authorize the township manager to authorize the settlement participation forums on behalf of the town, on behalf of the township. Subject to. Approval from our township attorney.
Shipley supports.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald that is stated, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have Article ten. We have our attorney here, our special counsel for PFOS remediation, specifically the board will hear. An update on the status of negotiations regarding the airport and PFOS remediation. That is in closed session. Pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight subsection H. So we will go back to the back room, have that discussion on only that subject and then return following. That item, we'll have a discussion about the treasure appointment process or we'll just discuss it and then. Public comments. So we hope you'll stick around, but just wanted to let you know what to expect.
Take a motion to.
Is there a motion?
Motion made to go to closed session.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald to enter closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we gotta do, I'm sorry, clerks later, please call the rule.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yep.
Clerk Slater, yes.
Supervisor List. Yes, we are now in closed session.
Folks, I had a commander that always reminded me, hope is not a method, so please stay.
We don't have to have a call to back.
I think we probably have five, six guys or.
Well, water hookup is available. Finally, the cost of reimbursing. The township for its engineering fees and the hookup costs that some individuals incurred early in the project. Who had the availability to hook up, given the existing mains, even though they weren't in the service district. Those are going to be reimbursed through the township. And airport will be funding that reimbursement. So those are the key highlights of the settlement agreement. Hopefully, this project will go forward then. And there won't be any unforeseen costs. If there are, they are covered. And hopefully, we won't discover any further environmental problems related to this particular PFAS issue. And we can all move on with other matters. We hope to have the airport's approval of the project or the settlement. When they meet in April. So that's the timeframe. Any questions?
I just want to make and just clarify that that this board's agreement is conditioned upon general counsel's approval. Which hopefully we can get very soon, but then should something come, something be thought of that was unexpected, we reserve the right to change the language. But that shouldn't be timing, timing wise, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, and of course, it's also conditioned on the airport board approving it and signing the draft agreement that we have in place. Alright.
With that, I I move to approve the settlement as advised by council. And then direct and approve supervisor Lusprance to sign the settlement based on the airport authorities approval and signature and final revision or review by the township legal council.
And Shipley supports the motion.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the settlement agreement as outlined by special counsel. And to direct the necessary elected officials to sign the agreement conditioned upon one, the airport authority's signature of same. And two, approval of the approval of the language and terms by general counsel of the township. And then just to clarify, we reserve that right to change it based on general counsel, but. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Van Essen. Good work. Article eleven, discussion. We have two discussion items first, the treasurer appointment process or appointment, and then discussion item two, the twenty twenty-three local roadwork schedule. We've all had an opportunity to review the applicants that we got for our currently vacant treasurer position. No applicant received four recommendations, however, three applicants did receive three recommendations. Those particular candidates or applicants are township residents, Ms. Wendy Corstange, Ms. Stacy Hale, and Ms. Peggy Murphy. So the board has a challenging schedule ahead of us, and tonight we'll talk about the next steps. Questions, comments, discussion?
I'd just like to say that, you know, the treasure position is really a unique position on the board. It it's really best served for residents and our purposes by somebody who's got experience and the professional experience and background in accounting, finance, budgeting, tax assessments. You know, understanding the township's assets and liabilities and public accounting, and we had some really exceptional applicants, including a couple who are CPAs and who have in incredible superlative references. And not only in their education and background, but that they've served, for example, on the Grand Rapids Income Tax Review Board, so they understand from a treasurer's position that with income tax review and the importance of those. Again, they're CPAs, they've got community service awards. So I would suggest that we have two or three in for interviews and then make our final selection at the next board meeting. Which is, I think, April twelfth, Ben?
Correct, the next board meeting is April twelve.
So if we can schedule the interviews between now and now and then.
So we have spring break coming up. Oh, go ahead, other comments.
Say you want to call special meeting then for those interviews? So that we can be at a decision by the next meeting?
Will these be public interviews?
They have to be.
Yeah, for the public to watch.
So we need to advertise the the times of interviews so that public can either zoom in or be here.
Post it like we do every meeting.
We put mine.
Public issues require public deliberation, so this will be no different.
April eight.
Yeah, April eight would be Monday.
April twelve.
No, April twelve.
Ten would be, April ten would be Monday.
We should do, so I'm assuming that trustees want to be present and given upcoming schedules of people being absent, we should do, or I recommend we do the special, excuse me, the interviews. This week or next?
My schedule can be wide open to whatever the rest of the board needs.
I'm out of town all next week, so I can.
Can you make April ten?
Yeah, make April ten, April eleven.
Yeah, you're not gonna be able to go.
I would like, I think it would be great if we could do it next week as soon as possible in case there's anything else that.
About this, is it too soon to do it this week, Thursday, Friday? They'll accommodate all the trustees or?
Thursday is tomorrow.
Little short notice for the.
Cause we wouldn't be able to meet the posting requirement.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Friday, you could do Friday.
We'll do Monday, when everybody's back from spring break, Monday, the tenth and the eleventh, to give everybody a lot of time to.
Well, I mean, I'm just one person.
We're all just one person. We all matter equally.
True.
Are the.
Well, the reality is, this is, we gotta make a decision.
By April twelve.
Do the best we can.
Our April twelfth is our, really our deadline.
So, and with spring break coming, I I think it should be.
Next week is better.
End of this week or next week?
Probably next week, because we have to post, right, then how?
Well, Tuesday.
How much time do we have to have?
Eighteen hours.
Eighteen hours.
Always, okay. So we could.
Next week would be best.
Is there a time where trustee McDonald, that you would be available next week?
I'm in Colorado.
Bitcoin scheme.
Didn't know that.
That makes sense. Okay, well, we'll do the best.
I could come remotely, but.
Except the OMA doesn't.
Oh.
Ilve Meeting Act.
You can't do that.
Which logically doesn't quite make sense, but that's just how it is.
If you can observe the meeting but not vote.
Hundred percent, right, yeah.
Are the three candidates here tonight?
Well, but this is just the interview process, right? This isn't voting.
Correct.
Correct.
If I could listen in maybe if it's available.
Oh, yes.
True.
Absolutely.
Can the people be, can they be there?
Those, yes.
Who's their?
Open to the public.
Yeah, well, I'm saying. So then to clarify, who, yep, and so
Interviewees.
Is there, does the, how to? So none of this is required, but I agree that the process makes no sense in this. Do we want to interview all seven? Do we want to interview the three that got?
I think the three, like we had initially.
Are the, are the three here tonight?
No.
No, I don't know.
One of them.
I don't know any of them, so.
Wendy's here, okay.
Wendy's here, oh.
Alright.
Um. Special meeting, alright.
We could even get it in this week at all, it'd be great.
Special meeting. I will call it, we'll work, manager Swayze, you can help us schedule it. Or either later this week, but most likely early next week. To reach out to the three candidates who who receives three recommendations, the ones I mentioned earlier.
And supervisor, should we schedule them such that, you know, one's at one o'clock, one's at two o'clock, one's at three o'clock?
So this is the tricky part. I think to be fairest, it's an open meeting, right?
Correct.
Um. There's no perfect answer, but I think to be fairest to all the candidates are most fair. It's, it's, the person who goes first is, it's like, you almost see the person who goes third is at advantage, because you can watch the whole thing, think about it, so really to it'd be, we can't control it, but I think preferably they're all here at the same time, and maybe we ask them. Kind of a.
Or maybe you one, two, three, three, two, one.
Yeah, but.
The two parts.
Yep, and they should all really probably be sitting. Sitting here. Just because the first person is at naturally at a disadvantage, the third person's at an advantage, so.
That's the way life is.
That's, yeah, just to level it as much as possible. What do you think? I can't think of anything better.
Agreed.
Ask that they wear earmuffs and do the best we can. Okay, well, we'll schedule, so we'll plan on tomorrow during the business day, we'll have a special meeting set. Direct manager Swayze to work with schedules and we'll have a meeting set for either late this week, most likely early next week.
Yeah, we gotta give the, each candidate some visibility too.
I think we all agree, we do not want, maybe that we can decide better than a county election. We'll work with schedules, but the reality is.
We can get the most people there that we can.
And then make the final decision on, at the next board meeting on April twelve.
Or sooner.
Yeah.
But we haven't until the fourteen.
Right.
So I think it'd be nice to do it in public.
Right.
Yeah, at a meeting.
For sure, in public.
Right.
So I think it should be at the next board meeting, that gives us plenty of time. And puts it in front of the public.
So our next board meeting is April twelve?
April twelve, correct, and we haven't until the fourteen, so that'd be, so we
Perfect.
Clearly meet it.
Great. No action is required. Is there further discussion, questions, comments?
Just pick a time and date.
Yeah, we'll be there.
Be nice if the candidates could come.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, because they might be out of town or still, they might be full-time jobs too.
Veno, Veno work is magic.
Yep. Um, second item for discussion, twenty twenty-three local roadwork schedule.
Great, thank you. So it's time for us to figure out where we're gonna stick some of our public dollars into our road system, so. I provided you kind of an overview map of some of the places that myself and our township engineer have identified that will need work in the next couple of years, as well as some cost estimates from the road commission on what those will cost. A reminder that any project in this program that is done, fifty percent of the funds come from the road commission and fifty percent of the funds come from the local unit. On top of that, we've been talking for a while now about Snow Avenue. And, you know, the township did order initial engineering for that project last year. We got that engineering back, and we had a pretty good meeting with the residents in that area on, in February. So that is set to come to the township board at our meeting, first meeting in April as well to discuss if the township wants to move forward with that project, so. That one will be a little bit more formalized, it'll be a public hearing, so the residents in the project area will have a chance to come talk to you guys about the project as well. But the road commissioner here will be here to talk a little bit about the actual project, what it looks like. I'll be able to talk about what our options are going forward for the funding of it. The residents will be able to talk about the project, and then the board will have an opportunity to pick a path forward for that. So don't really need to have any decisions about snow tonight. That'll be a big topic on the twelfth, but I wanted, as we were talking about roads, I wanted to make sure you guys understood that that was forthcoming. In the meantime, I just need to have a discussion about which sections of regular roads we want to do maintenance on this year. Once I have an idea about what you guys would like to look to address, we'll have the road commission put together work orders, and those will come back at the meeting in April as well.
Discussion?
Just to kind of lead it off, right, so obviously the big one in the middle is the the project that we are talking about with the water work. Of course, any disturbance in the road from the water work is paid for by the project itself. But a majority of the water project actually takes place in the right of way off of the road. So the idea is, if you look at our Pazer map, this is really the last blob of red in the middle of the sea of green, green roads. So I imagine in two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, we'll be focusing on that area specifically. I wouldn't recommend the township board do anything with that section in two thousand and twenty-three. So there's a residential subdivision, Abbeydale, up on the kind of northeast section of the township. You know, that was a project that we had initially kind of put off, because there was a potential subdivision with pub- public roads going in on the north end of that. That project is stalled, we have no idea when it would go forward, so I'd be comfortable doing, you know, that project if we wanted to. That's two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, the full project, again, the township would be responsible for half of that. We have an area of commercial roads down in the southwest portion of the township that haven't been addressed. That one's a little bit more expensive, but those will need to be addressed at some point. There is still that apartment complex going in down there, so that might be something that we would want to potentially wait on until after that project is complete. Because there's some public roads as part of that project. And then we have a couple, what I'll call section line roads over on the east side of the township. You know, we do get some complaints about Buttrick, there is a short section of Buttrick that's being done this year. Just on the north end of our township in Ada Township, they're redoing Buttrick between Grand River and Thornapple River Drive. You know, the recommendation would be that 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 road probably is beyond your typical chip seal now. The complaint we get is typically the roller coaster ride, so it isn't the potholes necessary. It's that, you know, years and years and years of chip seal have made it so you're kind of rocking back and forth when you go down it. So the road commission did recommend if we wanted to fix that, a crush and shape would be more appropriate. And then on Twenty-Eighth Street and Thirty-Sixth Street, you know, they said they Twenty-Eighth Street, they really said the the traffic counts there really indicate that a chip seal is appropriate. However, on Thirty-Sixth Street, you know, with that going through past snow, that is more of a through street. They said that, you know, they would recommend either a chip seal or a crush and shape if we wanted a little bit more intense project.
Then is that, you said crushing, what do you call it, shape?
Crushing shape, so essentially what they do is instead of milling it off and throwing it away and putting down new asphalt, they actually crush the asphalt that's in place, compact it, and then put a new top layer of asphalt.
Is that the five hundred eighty thousand?
That's the five hundred eighty, yep.
I've stated before that, in my opinion, we should be focusing on the residential areas. And not the industrial areas. And Ben, I think you made a good call that since they're still building apartments down in the far southwest corner. We can just that one for this year. But focus on what we can for residential and those connector roads, like what you talked about. Twenty-Eighth Street and Thirty-Sixth Street out in the country. No sense in letting them get to the point where cars start going off into the ditch.
So if we wanted to combine, you know, Buttrick and then the Abbeydale subdivision, that would put us up right around eight hundred thousand dollars, our half would be four hundred. That's typically what we start as, is our budgeting point. You know, if we wanted to add in chip seals on Twenty-Eighth and Thirty-Sixth, we could look at that as well. We would have to budget a few extra dollars to put that in there.
Does the road commission anticipate being able to get a good deal on costs, materials like we have had in the past?
So they've been seeing good returns this year, primarily because it just so happens that MDOT does not have a lot of projects in the grand region. So some of our local pavers that are typically gobbling up MDOT projects are now looking for work, so.
They're starving.
So I wouldn't say, you know, great deals, because, you know, the cost of supplies are still out there, but we're not competing against other projects like we have been in the past.
Okay.
Snow Avenue, where does this fit into status and decision making? I apologize if you are repeating yourself.
Yep, so Snow Avenue, we'll talk about, you know, next week. So the section of road that is our responsibility is essentially a six hundred thousand dollar project. So a little bit different split on that, we pay fifty-five percent as opposed to fifty percent, so three hundred and thirty thousand dollars if we want to do that. So when we come back next week, you know, we'll talk about the project, and then the the board will have to make a decision. A, if they want the project to go forward, and then B, if they do want the project to go forward, you know, what the, what that is, right? So the board can make the decision that, hey, we're gonna, we're just gonna do this project and pay for all of it. That is a two thousand and twenty-four project at this point, that we wouldn't be able to get the engineering done for two thousand and twenty-three. And the residents are well aware of that, the road commission talked about that at the last meeting. The board could say that, yep, we'll do the project, but the residents have to pay for all the local share. Or the board could say, yep, we're gonna do the project, and, you know, the the residents should pay X percentage of the project, and they'll then sign a petition to go forward, so a couple of different options.
Okay.
But again, for fiscally, we don't have to worry about that until two thousand and twenty.
Is this up on the website at all, any of the, do we have any of this information or?
So you don't have it up on the website right now, well, once we make a decision about what projects we're gonna do, then we will, we'll post it.
Okay. Great. Article twelve, public comments.
Because, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew, just maybe, go ahead.
I do, I do need some direction about what projects you guys want to do, so I can come back with some work orders.
Sounds great, go ahead.
I, I make mention that Ben continues as he forecasted tonight on those areas, focus on those areas that benefit the residents most.
And those are, are you saying Buttrick and Abbeydale? Is that what you said, John? That's, those are the two that we talked about most prominently, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I think Ben wants us to specify. That'd be good.
That'd be good, those two, and then we're going to consider the Goodwood area after the construction of the water main.
Yeah, two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, we're gonna wait till next week's meeting on Snow Avenue.
Okay, okay. Two or three, April twelfth, right? Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, I got my, I got my marching orders, thank you.
Article twelve, public comments.
Ken Vanderkoch, seventy-two hundred Leighton. These people with the Egypt Creek. When are they gonna get a notice, when are you gonna get something from the lawyers? You keep saying, I'm waiting from the lawyers. Don't we have a big enough law firm that we have, that these people can get some answers, that we can get some citations? Or we can get something worked out for them? I come here week after week after week. And it's been years, and nothing's happening. Are you pushing anything? Are you talking to these lawyers?
Yeah, we talked to them, we did issue citations this week, so I mentioned.
They did issue citations?
Yep.
Well, you didn't say anything about that.
I did.
Well, you did.
Yep.
So they, they are on the move now.
Yep.
Did the state representative, is he backing down now? So they, it's all on the township? Or he never did do anything?
Nope, so they visited the site and they have restoration requirements that they have to do, that Eagle is imposing on.
And when does this have to be completed?
I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was sometime in May.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boujack, welcome.
Good evening, Walter Boujack, sixty-six, thirty-nine, Thornapple River Drive. I'm your King County Commissioner, District twenty-one. Thank you for serving as trustees of the citizens of Cascade Township. I know it's a difficult assignment, and I think you're doing a great job. And I just wanted to say congratulations on your lawsuit negotiation with the airport. I think that's great news for the township, great news for the citizens. And I'm hoping that the ARPA funding that was coming from the county, the three million dollars that had a stipulate, no litigation stipulation, I'm hoping that that stipulation will have been negotiated away. And that the township will be able to enjoy the three million dollars of ARPA funding. Because truly, that is a, a established use for ARPA funding. Especially when you're talking about water for the city, improved water and remediating the PFAS situation. So again, congratulations on your negotiation with the airport, good job, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
So Matt Buckhold, five, seven, seven, six, Snow Avenue, just here to be visible and continue the discussion in the sport. A couple of residents that are here with me as well. And so we just, this is an important project for us, we want to stay visible. Dale Vander Schaaf, who normally joins and is visible, he's here in spirit, but he's out of town tonight. We did have an additional piece of property that we didn't realize was in scope, we heard from those owners today, it's an empty lot. And they're very supportive and on board, so we have one more to add to the list that's, that's supportive. And so we're all looking forward to the April twelfth meeting, so just thanks for the consideration and thanks to Ben and sharing that discussion tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Rob Dewey with fifty-eight oh five Snow Avenue as well, so wanted to voice support for the project. I did want to thank Ben. The meeting that we had a month ago with the road commission was very informative. Had a good chance to ask a lot of questions, get a lot of information back. You know, my main motivation for the project is, is about safety, it's probably because my job is in risk management, so I always kind of have an eye for that, but where I sit is at the top of a hill that's kind of blind. And it's also the narrowest point of the road, so it's constantly washing out, so people kind of drive towards the center, and it's it's kind of a point that, you know, makes it difficult, I'm really surprised we haven't had an event there, so that was kind of the one thing as far as taken into consideration is, you know, that spot in particular, and it's right outside by driveway, I actually built pillars to kind of provide some protection, and then at the meeting kind of realized, I'm gonna have to move those, so. And I'm all for it, so, you know, I'm just basically saying, you know, I'm in to even find my own personal financial commitment to make it happen, so. Just want to say thanks and appreciate moving forward the project.
Thank you, thanks for your patience. Anyone else have any comments or questions tonight?
Sure, excuse me, Rod Schultz, Orange Drive. I would just ask that whomever you select for the treasurer, that hopefully there'll be a Cascade Township resident.
They will be, it's required.
Okay, I didn't know if it was, I'm new here. And the other thing is, I've served in California as a commissioner, and I can be forgiven for that, for what's going on over there. And in Arizona, and also Michigan, because I moved around a lot. But I guess I would like to say that the Cascade Library is the best one I've ever seen. Without, you know, you think you're shopping at Saks Fifth Avenue or something, they treat you well, they have great programs. They're just great people. I don't know any of the librarians, I don't have a horse in that race, they're just, it's, it's well done, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Cascade.
Yeah.
We don't have earthquakes here.
Any, Mr. Van So, welcome.
Hello, Scott Van Solkma, Orange Street. I did put in for the treasurer position, I'm sorry I didn't get enough votes or what have you to move forward. I do know that whoever gets the job, I hope that they are in being in charge of, I guess, taxpayer money is, in my view, extremely important. I've been vocal on some issues as to how some things get spent here. And maybe that put a sour taste in some people's mouths, I don't know. Obviously, I don't have, you know, a CPA background, I was a police officer, I did financial investigations, that was my actually, one of my favorite things to do was that, and because the numbers don't lie, the numbers are there, they're either there or they're not. So basically, I just would have liked to have had the opportunity to at least interview for the position and obviously sit up there. I am grateful that you guys were able to get some the thing done with the airport, having grown up on Tanglewood, which is right across the street from Trout Creek. And I remember going there, and you see the foam and the bubbles in the water, and be like, hey, that's interesting. Evidently, this was PFAS, so, and also having a well growing up. You know, dealing with that, so. And on an additional note, that light in front of international beverage is still flickering, it's like a strobe light, so I don't know if, you know, hopefully we don't have another crash into international beverage, I know that's happened a few times in the, in the decades preceding. But if someone's coming down Twenty-Eighth Street, that But if someone's coming down Twenty-Eighth Street, that. Bright white light could be doing that, so. But that's it, I guess, I uh, just a little disappointed, so, but thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight. No comments virtually? Article thirteen, manager comments.
Yeah, just a couple items, so I'm happy to report that the Hope Network has secured funding for the rest of the. Uh, fiscal year for our riders, um, so everybody, I think all of the riders from Cascade reached out to say how they're appreciative. They were of the board to provide that interim uh funding, um, but the uh CDBG COVID fund is. Is uh providing funding for uh March through the end of June, so. Uh, we're excited about that, and then we're continuing to engage both uh CDBG and the Hope Network on designing the program to make sure that we don't get in this. Same situation next year, so.
Good news.
But very good news, uh.
Did we have to shell out any, did the township have to pay anything?
We did, yep, so I haven't got the full book, full bill yet, but it'll probably end up costing us three or four thousand dollars. Um. I did get a note from Dr. Keys today, so he is planning on coming to give the board their uh deer study um. Report uh at a meeting in April, uh, so he's just finalizing it with the students that uh worked uh on the project, so. Uh, be able to come and give the uh board an idea of the issues that are happening in Burton Park and some potential next steps. Uh, I don't want to ruin the surprise, but there's too many deer in the park, so, um, and then. Uh, working on something that would potentially be scalable as well, right? So, uh, not only is there a deer issue in the park, but there's a deer issue in the rest of the township as well, so. Um, look forward to seeing Dr. Keys in April, um, talked about that, um. Uh, just a staffing update, so uh we made an offer today to a Parks and Rec Director candidate. Uh, sounds like we didn't get a signed paper back by five o'clock, but it sounds like uh the person is interested in accepting, so. Uh, that'll be contingent upon the board approving uh that appointment uh in April. Uh, but very excited about that, I have a lot of, lot of candidates for our communication specialist position, that closes Friday, so we're working through that process. Uh, to have that person in sometime in April, um. Uh, have our economic development director position posted now, so that still won't close for another couple of weeks, but working on that. And then just wanted to let everybody know that long-term, long-time fire department employee, our uh fire marshal Doug Poolman. Has announced his retirement at the end of April, so uh we're wishing uh Marshall Poolman all the best uh in his well-deserved retirement. And the fire department will be working through the promotion process for uh that position in the coming months as well, so. Lots of good stuff going on.
Busy. Board comments.
Always get up and thank my bosses for being here. Uh, there's some empty chairs there, bring neighbors back next time, Scott, I'm sorry about uh, I'm not getting an interview. But might I remind each and every one of you that there's a lot of committees out here that you can apply for. And the more brains on a committee, the better that committee makes decisions. So if you're thinking about maybe spending some unpaid volunteer time, check it out. Okay, check with either Ben or, or. That's all I have.
Trustee Nordhoff?
Yeah, I uh would like to uh. Like to make a point of uh having a public hearing or a public uh, a public meeting, informational meeting about the orange survey stakes going down Thornapple River Drive. I've had a few neighbors ask me what they're for, and it's, it's really for the water line going down to the neighborhood of the PFOs. But I think everybody should be able to ask some questions and be informed about that, so if we could set something up. So that residents know what's going on before they have a crane in their front yard. Uh, that, and then I'd also like to thank Scott for applying and Wendy for applying, so, thanks for coming tonight.
And thank you for sticking around, uh, really appreciate it. There's a lot going on, so the more um people we have paying attention, the better, easier it makes our jobs, we really appreciate it. Any other board comments?
Make a motion for adjournment since the business of this board has been concluded this evening.
Second. It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by clerk Slater, to adjourn, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, we are adjourned.